I'd like to call the meeting to order. Let's please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and the prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Commissioner Deser, would you lead us in prayer?
Our most gracious heavenly father, we come together here on this fine Tuesday night to make the best possible decisions for our city. We ask you just for nothing but wisdom and guidance in order to help us do that, and please stop the pollen. Amen. Am I wrong?
We're happy to do it. Always obliged you.
Okay, item two, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting, March 22, 2022. Do I hear a motion?
Motion, second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? If none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Item three, petitions and communications to the public and items from the audience.
There's nothing written, Mr. Mayor.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Item four, reports of boards and committees. Tonight, we have Gatlinburg Convention and Visitor Bureau first quarter report, presentation by President slash CEO, Mr. Mark Adams.
Hello, everybody.
Hi, Mark.
We have some special guests with us tonight, too. So Chad Netherland and Scott Murphy. So we'll give you guys a quick report on the first quarter here, and you have one in front of you as well there. But the first quarter was really strong for us, more on the politicking side, with a lot of time for me personally in Nashville. We had a lot of meetings with the governor and the Commissioner of Tourism, and so were state representatives, senators, and representatives over there. In fact, our board chair, Jacqueline Schaefer, and also another business partner with ours, Jackie Leatherwood. We had dinner with all of our representatives over in Nashville to talk about Gatlinburg, make sure they don't forget about us, along with Congresswoman Diana Harshbarger and others there. But the visitor's center, I don't mention the visitor's center, probably I don't mention them enough, but they were very active this first quarter. And so they welcomed almost just over 57,000 visitors. That's about 4,000 short of 2021, but that's still impressive with coming into the new year. And we all know the Great Smoky Mountains National Park was closed double-digit days in January. So that hurt a little bit of our business in January with them being closed double-digit days because of inclement weather. But, you know, again, Florida, Georgia, North Carolina were three of the more popular states when our staff asked where people are from. But this week and last week, Lori Tierney, who does a great job for us, said New Jersey and Illinois, but she said especially New Jersey is starting to find us, and they're all loving it when they get here. So, but I'm gonna have Chad talk to you about some of the numbers from the first quarter. They're very impressive.
Yeah, thanks. Thank you, everybody. Just a quick update from the marketing side. Gatlinburg.com, it's really the hub where we try to bring in most of the traffic. First quarter session's up 38%. One of the biggest increases that we have had in any year, March alone was up. We had 618,000 visitors to Gatlinburg.com just in March. That is the largest month we have ever had in a first quarter in history. So, big, big numbers there. Organic traffic's up, direct traffic's up, new users to the site, which we're trying to get, 36% up. That's great. If you look at the top 12 cities here across, or the top 10 cities really that's listed, Nashville, Atlanta, Charlotte, top three performers for the, for the quarter. It is interesting to note that we do have quite a few billboards in those markets as well. So in Charlotte, Nashville, and Atlanta is where we have the core of most of our outdoor advertising. I will point out the largest increase for that first quarter, Washington DC, kind of a halo effect from Pigeon Forge, Dollywood, the state, and a few other co-ops that you're starting to see. That's not just Washington DC proper, but, you know, Maryland and the whole DMA area there. Moving over to the bottom of the page.
Chad, can I ask a question about what do you attribute the 40, almost 40% increase?
Well, it's two different things. I think, one, it's, it's we advertise earlier this year. We really started advertising in January and really hitting it hard. All the media came online much, much earlier this year than it did last year. And then a lot of PR in the first quarter, really trying to pump that up. When we place our television buys, anything that we buy, we require 25% added value. And so we get that most of the time in end markets where we send Marcy and we're on Zoom calls, and it's more PR than it is just paid advertising, and I think that's helped quite a bit.
The broadcast TV Vice Mayor, we started a full month earlier.
Yeah, sure did.
Are we still partnering with Dollywood with the billboards?
Yes, we sure are. Yeah.
So we have billboards in the Charlotte area and also Nashville as well as Atlanta.
Awesome. Thank you.
Yeah, on the next page, page three, if you look, vacation guides, we printed 400,000 guides, 22,000, four of them already mailed out, 14,000 guides downloaded so far this year. We're already off to a good start. Social media, this is a big one I want to point out. I won't read every one to you, but take a look at Facebook real quick, 923,000 likes. We're gonna hit 1 million likes this year. But if you look at the next line of the 1 million likes, our reach is really amazing, and this is a tribute to how many people really love Gatlinburg. We reached 35.7 million people that we reached in the first quarter of the year, just on Facebook alone. Just to put that into like a round numbers here, that is the population of the entire state of Tennessee, Ohio, North Carolina, and Georgia combined to reach 37 million in reach. So we are really, really happy with some of our socials. One of the big things that's coming on TikTok, we're starting to create more content specifically for TikTok. If you see it, 2 million views so far, and that just continues to rise. YouTube's become a good channel for us. It's the second largest search engine next to Google. It's actually owned by Google. And Twitter continues to do the same. We'll see what happens now that Elon Musk purchased it and took it private. So that should be interesting in itself. Couple of posts at the bottom there, maybe a little bit too small to see, but we'll point out one. There was a beautiful snow day. We threw it up there, didn't hardly put anything behind it, reached a million people. So excited about that. Moving over to page four, just gonna skip over some of that if you don't mind, talk about spring break. Marcy is out hammering it out in the spring break areas. He's in over 12 markets in March and April, television, radio stations, interviews, and like I just said a second ago, that we negotiate 25% of all media spends from broadcast that has to go into an added value, and that's kind of where this PR comes into effect. And I'll let Mark kind of talk about the special events.
Well, Marcy was on TV today.
Yes, she was on TV this afternoon, yeah. And turn it back over to Mark for some of the special events.
Scott's gonna touch on some of the special events, but special events in the first quarter, we did do Ricky Skaggs. We promoted Ricky Skaggs over at the convention center. Turned out to be very successful. I know Commissioner Reagan, you were there in attendance with us, but that promotion earned almost 65,000 TV impressions and 1.5 million online impressions. So it was something that was good for Gatlinburg. It was actually, we're able to track where those ticket sales are from, and pretty much 95% of the ticket sales were from outside of the Gatlinburg-Sevier County area, which is awesome. And then also the songwriters' week. So Tennessee does a songwriting week the last week of January every year, and we participate, Gatlinburg, we actually, the semifinals, we've done that, hosted that the last couple of years here in Gatlinburg, and we work closely with the state on that, and it gets us a lot of exposure. And it was at Old Red, and Blake Shelton called in, et cetera, for that, for that particular event. So a lot of exposure there. St. Patrick's Day, we continue to promote St. Patrick's Day and grow that event. Again, it's really more marketing. A lot of the attractions are already, and restaurants are already doing things for St. Patrick's Day. We're able to roll what they're already doing and make a big PR and promotions, marketing blitz about what's going on here for St. Patrick's Day. Also Pancake Week, we started a Gatlinburg Pancake Week. Again, same, kind of the same vein as we did Gatlin Burger Week, but we hosted a different pancake house every single day and talked about the history of pancakes in this area, and the restaurants really enjoyed that. It got them a lot of added exposure. And I know, Commissioner Smith, we focused on Crockett's as well that week. So I think the restaurants really appreciated that. And then you can see some of the accolades. They just continue to come in, Southern Living's Best Mountain Town, Travel and Leisure, most charming small towns in Tennessee, and Far and Wide, Best Small Towns, Best Small Town in the Mountains. You can see some of the other interviews. Marcy Still, as Chad says, just, we're on TV just about everywhere. We're doing an interview just about every week for TV in our feeder markets. And on page eight, I'll mention this about sales. Proud to, proud to talk about this, especially the top chart there. You can see some of we've really, while we survived COVID at the convention center, we're really starting to see some additional groups come back this year. But proud of the sales team for this. We are booking into events into 2030. So we just got contracts back for events booking all the way up through 2030 and 2027. So we're booking now like five to seven to years in advance, which is great for the convention center and projecting how they're gonna do. And then I'll let Scott talk about some of the things going on with some of the renovations and some of the other events.
And yeah, I want to, Mark's point on this, even though we had a really good, strong first quarter in '21, especially compared to other convention centers around the country or around the world, we've nearly doubled it to the first quarter of 2022. Some of the things that Mark had already talked about, some of the special events were covered in this, but on page 10, we had several events over the, over the first quarter, and some of them were, were brand new to the, to the convention center this time, five of which were brand new. We, we hosted the Lincoln Day Dinner. We had Leadership Tomorrow. The Leadership Tomorrow was the first event to use the new meeting rooms behind the auditorium that was part of the construction project that's underway, and several have used them since, since its opening. But we did groups like FCC LA, that was new, and several good things.
And they're returning. It was a new event for us. They've been returning for multiple years.
And the convention center has been very busy, which is a good thing. So jumping to page 13, as far as a construction update goes, we're in the process of finishing the new office space. So of course with COVID and shipping and there's some delays and things, but it's looking like next week, probably on Thursday, the staff is gonna move into the new spaces. We're getting the new steel to finish the front porch, and that's supposed to be in the first and second week of May. That, that will be done, and as soon as we can get that cover back over the porch, DNS will work on the upper level unobstructed because it's beyond the, the area where events would be. The modernization of the escalator at the Parkway end is going well. We do have, we've got a report there's a little bit of a delay for the ones that are going to be brand-new units. They're in China. China's having a bigger shutdown, I guess, now. Certain transportation things are blocked, and certain components, we're trying to get them to the escalators. Even once they're complete, it could be six weeks before they get here. We're working very hard to keep this on schedule because we're trying to work, this is gonna be down as many as 17 weeks. We're trying to do it while the conventions haven't, convention centers haven't one of the busiest years ever. You may have seen above the shade tree parking lot, the skylight is being replaced. So they're a little more than halfway on that. Carpet, carpet again is based on when we have events in the building, but the entire mills complex is done, the upper level is finished, and the lower level, we're waiting on the skylights because we don't want to have any weather get to it or more lifts driving over it than necessary because that could just, you know, damage the new carpet. But overall, things are going very well. We're gonna have an update meeting tomorrow, and we'll have some better numbers as far as the restroom upgrade goes, and finalizing some prices on that. But I think everything's gonna be on budget, and we should still be, we're hoping for October, November to wrap everything up.
Thank you. And then Commissioner Deser, I also included for you some additional marketing that you had requested last time. Now, if anybody else wants additional marketing, we'd be happy to supply that as well.
Yep, we'll go over it. Thanks, Mark. Appreciate that.
Thank you, gentlemen. Okay, item five, city manager's report.
Yes, sir. I have a couple of items received in the podium, and I'm sure you've got multiple things there, but we do have updates on Capitol projects and the convention center that Scott just gave you firsthand an update on. So just want to call those to your attention. And then I want to advise of some upcoming events. Keep Sevier Beautiful will be holding a free TARP, T-A-R-P giveaway event this Friday from 10:00 AM until noon in Pigeon Forge at the Ripken Experience. TARP, meaning what you put over open garbage bags in the back of a pickup truck, right? And so Keep Sevier Beautiful, and Seth is our representative on the board, received these from Keep Tennessee Beautiful, and it's an effort to deal with litter across Sevier County, and an educational effort on the state's TARP law to cover unsecured loads which cause litter and accidents. So that's what's going on this Friday, 10:00 AM until noon. If you know of anyone who would be interested in that, we would appreciate your letting them know, 10:00 AM to noon at Ripken Experience. Our fire department is conducting firewise evaluations for residential and business properties in our response area. And if you want to get one of these evaluations, you reach out to, for more information, and contact Seth, or you can also contact the fire department directly. And the evaluations are to determine the fire risk to a property and ways to avert those dangers. So I encourage folks to take advantage of that. I think, Seth, we have some information out about this, don't we?
Yes, yes, we have. It's on our, if you go to our GatlinburgTN.gov website, you can find that there.
Okay. And then on this coming Saturday, the 30th, from 10:00 AM until 2:00 PM, the police department is doing the annual drug takeback day. And the way that works, Seth, is how?
There is a kiosk, it is receptacle in the lobby of the police department, and you can drop it off there. Between 10 and 2 is the designated time, but that, that receptacle's open on a 24/7 basis in the lobby of the police department.
I have municipal business A ordinance number 2586, an ordinance to amend section 15-607 of the municipal code and further being an ordinance to make additional changes to parking requirements and to not allow overnight or long-term parking. This is the third reading, passed first reading 222, 2022, and second reading is amended 322, 2022. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second. And Cindy, can we have a little discussion on this, please?
Yes, actually, Robert, I think the reason is before you this evening is that at the last meeting, it was amended to take out any increase in the monthly permit fees. So really, what is left in here is more of a housekeeping thing such as, you know, overnight parking or no long-term parking. I think if you lose your monthly permit pass, you have to pay $10. What else is in there, Robert?
That's it. That's it. After we take out the price increase, we decided to raise the permits.
Very good. Thank you, Cindy. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Item seven, new business, a discussion and consideration of approving a single bid from Charles Blaylock and Sons related to the Bishop Lane parking lot improvements project. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. Can we have a little discussion on this, please?
Well, yes. The project started, actually. We sent a memorandum in to you all late March. I've got it here. I think it was March the 25th, in an effort to get the project done in a timely fashion. So the project is going, I think, well, we would say. The target date for completion is May the 21st. Adds three spaces to the facility for the monthly permit parkers. Greg, Larry, do y'all have anything else to add to that?
They're, they're going well out there. They've got the building down, and their track goes up. They're cutting it to grade. They didn't work today because of the weather, of course, so they will resume tomorrow.
And thank you for mentioning that, Cindy. It's totally for permit parking, which will help out quite a bit. Sounds good. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Item B, discussion and consideration of approving, approving other than the low bid Baker's Waste Equipment for the purchase of a transfer compactor for the solid waste transfer station. Do I hear a motion?
Motion. Second.
Motion in a second, and we have discussion on this, please.
Yes, and let me just say that this project is funded in the amount of $692,000. The bulk of the funding did come in this fiscal year, correct, Robert? This is to do some important, necessary improvements to the city's solid waste transfer station that is located next to the sewer plant. And that facility is, I don't know, 35, 40 years old? How old is that facility?
It's 1990s, yeah, mid 90s, I believe.
It's, it's time to be spending some money down there. And what the, from a laywoman's perspective, here's what this will do. This will reduce the number of runs that we have to make in our transfer trailer to severe solid waste, which obviously means we save money.
Yes, it will, it will triple the weight per load.
Okay, go ahead, Larry.
And basically, it's, the reason for the Baker's Waste Equipment recommendation is they have a presence in the eastern U.S. They're somebody we know. They have support staff just over, on the other side of the mountain. Parts are available through them. And we just feel comfortable based on recent issues with other, other projects as well, dealing with the unknown. And that's the reason we're recommending going with Baker's Waste Equipment. They, they have a waste compactor for the city of Knoxville. They got two transfer compactors down there. They have one in Eden, North Carolina, one in Hickory, North Carolina, and they also supply the compactors for Sevier County, Sevier County Solid Waste Convenience Centers.
Larry, do you know how many trips this will eliminate?
We think this will get, where we're running about three to four trips a day, this will get us down to one trip a day. And it will also increase our capacity on the weekends and holidays when we really need it. So about just being able to compact the trash to three to one ratio where we're at for before.
Awesome. Brian, do you have anything?
Yeah.
I just, look at all the stuff you've been missing, Kirby. Isn't this exciting? I'm all for it.
Thank you, Larry. Any further discussion? If none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Item C, discussion and consideration of approving a contract from Welly Construction LLC related to the Bishop Lane Bridge project. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. Can we have discussion on this, too, please?
So, Larry, go ahead.
Okay, sure. This is, this is the Bishop Lane Bridge next to the Bishop Lane Parking Lot, of course, in between Johnson's End. And this is a narrow bridge that needs to be replaced. The head walls are deteriorating pretty rapidly. Robert Campbell's in the audience as well, if you need to add something to it, Robert. But it's, it's a narrow bridge that we've, we've got to replace, and we've talked to the businesses in the area and also to the school system about the bus routing, how that would be handled as well. So Mr. Bula has, has Johnson End. He's on board for it. He donated some property right away for the project. He wants it to happen. So, and also Jack Parton, we've also addressed the school bus issue on the routing, so everything's good there.
Will it look the same?
No, it'll be very similar to the Stephen Dryup Bridge.
It'll look better.
It'll look much better, yes, much better.
Is it gonna be the same width and everything, or is it?
Uh, it's, I think it's 22, 22 feet.
I can't read rail to rail. I think that's right.
Yeah, so it'd increase the width.
This is the low bid within budget. It's in the amount of $301,044 with $500 per day liquidated damages.
And we've also encouraged the contractor to try to reduce the scope to somewhere between a 45 and a 60-day project to beat, to beat July the 1st.
Good deal. Thank you, Larry. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Item D, discussion and consideration of approving change order number three to Mike Smith Pump Service LLC contract related to the blades to Buckhorn Road and sewer extension project. Do I hear a motion?
Second.
Motion in a second, and we have discussion on this.
Dale, if this, I will just simply say this is the final closeout change order on this project. It is actually represents a net reduction of five grand.
That is correct.
But it does add 135 days to the contract period.
Yes.
But this is really a closeout change order.
This is exactly what Cindy described. It's a closeout change order to reconcile the quantities and the number of days to complete the contract. We had unexpected delays in equipment specific to the project, as you can understand and imagine. So this is a net reduction of $5,000, exactly as Cindy said, adds 135 contract days. The good news is the project is done. It's complete. Amen.
Thank you, Dale. Any further discussion? If none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Item E, discussion and consideration of approving change order number one to the KDC Irrigation Service Contract related to the golf course irrigation and drainage improvements project. Do I hear a motion?
So, second.
Motion in a second, and we have discussion on this, please.
Yes, sir. Greg, Matt, Matt Pop, our golf manager is here.
Hey, Matt.
Hey, guys. Guys, this would be to purchase and install and prep sod. KDC would do that for us. With delays we had this spring and weather and also supplies, it's pushed them back. That making it a little harder for this stuff to heal up on its own. If I like to get the course to the standards we would like, this would be a good thing to, to move that along a little quicker.
And so the amount of the change order, guys?
54,000.
54,000.
54,000.
Is this just for the front nine?
No, this would be the whole course, areas that would be irrigated, that sod would, would take.
So the, the front nine open now?
These front nine is open.
And the back side is closed?
Back side is closed. Should be completely open by May 1st this weekend or the beginning of next week.
Oh, okay. All right. And the 54,000 is for the whole course patching?
Yes.
Okay.
I got new pains ready to try it out, so let's get it open.
Any other discussion? Thank you, Matt.
Thanks.
If none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Item F, discussion and consideration of approving the 5311 Rural Transportation Operating Assistance Grant contract with the Tennessee Department of Transportation for the Mass Transit Department. Do I hear a motion?
So moved. I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion in a second, and we have a little discussion on this, please.
Yes, this is actually a, an amendment to a contract that, these are very important due to the amount of money, sir. This is very important to the operating revenue of the trolley system. We have been receiving this grant for a very long time, and so this is actually add to a contract that was approved previously.
93,000, I think.
What are the numbers there, Robert?
Yeah, we, you've already approved a grant for 533,000. This, T.N. just added 93,000 to that, roughly, to bring this new contract up to a little bit above 626,000. So there's another grant that they're, they've extended the period plus allowed us to use some money from the other grant on this particular.
Any further discussion? If none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Item G, discussion and consideration of approving an audit contract with cross-lun CPAs for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2022. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
And we have discussion on this.
You have approved a, this time last year, I would guess, you approved a three-year agreement with this auditing company. This is the second year of that three-year agreement that we have to do an annual contract to meet what the state wants done. And it's, I think, 48,500?
Yes, yes, $1,000 more than last year.
Very good. Any other discussion? If none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Item H, discussion and consideration of making appointments to the City Public Building Authority and Industrial Development Board of Directors. Do I hear a nomination?
I'd like to nominate Candace Ogulmorton for the Public Building Authority Board.
And I'd like to make a motion for Steve McKinney.
Okay. Any other nominations? With none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Item- Item I, discussion and consideration of making appointment to the Planning Commission.
Again, I'd like to nominate Candace Ogulmorton for that position as well.
For Bud Ogul.
For Bud Ogul, yeah.
Very good, any other nominations? With none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say no. Item J, discussion and consideration of making appointment to the Sevier County Economic Development Council Board of Directors.
One final time, I'd like to nominate Candace Ogulmorton to fulfill her father's seat.
Very good.
Second.
Any other nominations? With none, all in favor of Candace, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say no. Item K, discussion and consideration of declaring certain city items as surplus, wrong to sir's favorite item.
It's the most boring.
Do I hear a motion?
This is more exciting than the last time.
It is more exciting than the last time. The coin sorter really set it over the edge.
Yeah, it still works.
No, I know.
Can we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, and any discussion on this? With none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say no. Item A, unscheduled items, we'll start with Commissioner DeSiri.
I don't have too much, I just wanted to say, you know, we lost Dick Ramsey, great teacher at Gatlinburg Pitten High School, a friend of mine, and I hate to see, see that happen, but certainly our thoughts are with Nola Sue, his wife, and that is literally all I had.
Very good.
Thank you.
Commissioner Smith, I'd like to welcome you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Appreciate the opportunity, glad to be here.
Awesome. Any other unscheduled?
No.
Very good, thank you. Commissioner Reagan.
Yeah, I'd like to, also, I got to see their daughter Veronica, Dick Ramsey, just this last week, and they live above me, and all them since I've been born, she graduated with me, so it touched me there, and also, Dicky Hickman passed, remember him, and I'd also like to keep Charlie Moore and Olamar in the prayers, Charlie's not doing too well right now here, so I just, just wanted to say, keep them in your prayers based on what Olamar mentioned to me, so.
Thank you, Chair. Vice Mayor McCown. I have a couple of things, one is Mark Adams, I want to send my appreciation to you for the work you've done in the last six years, you'll be truly missed, and, and good luck to you, so.
He's still floating around.
I know you, I know you are.
I'm still going to be in here, I'll still be at all the committee meetings.
Well, don't threaten it.
And I also like to welcome Kirby to the committee.
Absolutely, sir.
Yes, sir. That's all I've got, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mark, and I'll just echo everything else that is said, and thank you all for being here this evening, and ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
We are adjourned, and we do have a beer board.
Okay, so I'll make, I'll be beer board meeting to order, the first item or second on the agenda is approval of minutes for March 22nd, 22, I think that's correct.
Make the motion approve, second.
Well, let me just say that the date on the minutes, yes, it does, so, I'm sorry, the motion was made by whom?
Mark.
Mark.
I second.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
It's approved. Only one business, an item, and that is under new business discussion and consideration of approving an off-premise beer permit for George Havasi, DBA Gatlinburg Beer and Tobacco Market LLC located at 385 East Parkway, Suite 225, and all departments have signed off on the application, and therefore, it's no contingencies in, in order for approval, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
And everyone in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And is there a motion to adjourn?